Let's rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Okay, Jeff, do we have anything to add to the agenda?
Two items. One that Denise just handed out is a resolution for the sewer problem at the historic courthouse. We'll add under Administrator. And then I do have the appointment of a new engineer for us to consider under the Administrator's part as well.
Okay. All right. I need a motion to approve. Ted moves.
I'll second.
Tom seconds. Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, do we have public input? Anyone? Would you like to come a comment on something? Yep. So if you want to come up here and write your name and address down, please. Yep. So you just need to sign in and then you have three minutes.
I just wanted to address.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, Nancy Fitch, 504 Birch Avenue, Park Rapids. I just wanted to address the new flag that they want to pass. I think everybody is aware what happened to us. I don't have to go into a long speech about the history of the flag or anything. But I think the way they did it was deceitful, for one thing. I've done a lot of research, reaching out to our senator and other people to get their opinion on it. And our senator here, Paul Aki, said he hasn't even talked to one native who was offended by the flag. I believe the ones that were offended are from the cities and they are from the tribe that is the biggest donator to the Democrat Party. Paul even addressed the fact that this was all agenda-driven politics that forced this. I think, I don't know anybody who really likes that new flag. If there were parts of it that were offensive, maybe they could have addressed that part. But to completely redo it and put the burden of the expense of all these departments in every county, changing seals on police cars and flags in their buildings, I don't think a lot of counties can afford to do that right now. And especially with what's coming in this next legislative session, they're going to put a lot more mandates on you as far as a completely different subject, but the migrant situation with them in schools and housing and all those expenses coming up. I just think that they should have just left it alone. Our flag has great history behind it. And I haven't talked to one person that likes it myself, so. I would like you to consider joining Crow Wing, Wadena, the other counties that have already sent their resolutions in condemning this action of the flag. I guess that's really my main point here is to ask you to sign on with those resolutions.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there anyone else that has a public comment? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody wants to pull? Okay. I need a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Tom moves?
I'll second.
Ted seconds. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Employee recognition. Forgive me if I butcher your names. Auditor Treasurer Dorothy Przyzinski, election support began the temporary position on January 31st, 2024. Welcome. Lynn Spielman, election support began the temporary position on January 31st, 2024. Welcome. And Sheriff Cory Vrenata, dispatcher jailer began her position on January 17th of 2024. So welcome, everyone. Okay, we're way ahead of schedule. Let's move to Highway.
Good morning. Just really one item this morning, and it's to approve the final payment to Northern Paving Incorporated for State Aid Project 029592003. And this was an LRIT project, local road improvement project, that was awarded funding to Henry at a township. And it's for the reconstruction and paving of 204th Street, just north of Park Rapids here. And the final amount of that payment is $42,667.96.
Just one quick note. I was looking at the approve the final payment. The project number is different with the payment than it is in the beginning. It's 002 in the beginning and it's 00, I mean 003 in the beginning and 002 at the end.
It's 003. That's good.
Just a typo? Okay. All right. Thank you.
We have another Ted here.
All right. That's all right.
I'll make the motion to make the payment.
Okay, Ted moves?
I'll second.
Steve seconds. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Other than that, we just have a couple bid openings next week on the 13th for our annual calcium chloride contract and our annual gravel surfacing both at 10:00 and 11:00 a.m., so.
So how much money do you think you've saved from not having any snow?
Well, it's hard to tell because we have been dealing with the ice and everything too. So it's still burning up some of those resources as well. But definitely some with the snow. So hopefully, hopefully we get some moisture in the ground yet this year so we don't have a difficult spring or anything, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, hang on just a second. Madam Chair, maybe we should take care of the appointment of the engineer while Jeff is here. So we, if I can find the right paper. We had an interview committee. We interviewed two candidates. And our primary candidate did, in the end, agree to be here as our engineer, starting April 1st, 2024. Is that what this year is? So I would propose that the board appoint Andrea Woleski as the next Highway Engineer to start April 1, 2024, through the end of the current term, which is May of 2025.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Steve moves. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? I'm thankful we're getting one. Yeah, look forward to meeting her. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Jeff. And thank you, Jeff.
Pardon me?
Thank you.
Sorry.
What was the name again?
Andrea Woleski. Thank you.
Okay, Cory.
Good morning. The first item I have is to review and approve a Hubbard County Timber Management Plan Stakeholder Committee for a new 10-year timber management plan. It's been a long time coming. Our last management plan wasn't fully done since 2002. So timber resources can actually change quite a bit in 22 years. And I think a new updated plan would be a good fit for our department. So this will be a new 10-year plan that'll go to 2035. I'm hoping to have it complete by January 1st next year. It'll go over allowable timber harvest amounts, harvest rotation ages, harvest regulations, harvest timelines, and best management practices. This will be just a one-year committee of listed volunteers that are willing to share their opinions. And we'd like two county commissioners to be involved in the planning part. And of course, we'll involve everyone at the end to approve the plan. But four to five meetings throughout the year in person and then email correspondence. So I'm looking for approval of the beginning process to create a plan and for two commissioners to be involved.
As you stated, it's been long overdue.
Jeff, should we decide on the commissioners right now, do you think?
If you could, yes.
Well, Tom, with your background, you definitely need to be on there. One of you two?
I can certainly serve on it.
I too. So I don't know. We both have nine townships in our districts. But I think the bulk of the timbers are.
Yeah, probably in our two districts.
And I'd be okay with three, but is that, that has to be with the open meeting law? Yeah, so it has to be two.
You want to flip a coin?
I have an individual working at the Natural Resources Department. I will defer to you. I will let you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Ted and Tom will be the commissioners?
When do you anticipate your first meeting?
I'd be probably, it's a busy time right now, so probably in a month. Just trying to, I'll work with everyone's schedule. And we have a really good committee of all different backgrounds. So it's, it's pretty nice that they're willing to volunteer, so.
Yeah, you did a nice job of getting an array of people.
So it's, it's a, it's very good diversity from the mill side to the kind of naturalist side of things, so it'll be good.
Jeff, I just have a question. So other committee members of different committees get per diem, so this committee will also?
Typically, no.
No? Okay.
Not unless it's structured to establish that.
Okay. So does the board want to keep this volunteer?
Big commitment for Ted, especially.
Oh, I wasn't even talking about the commissioners. I'm talking about the people on the, yeah.
Everyone I talked to said they were willing to volunteer their time, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with leaving it as a volunteer.
Okay. Okay, so I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
The planning committee. Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do you think in March?
Yeah, probably start working out the first steps in March. And I'll be getting a lot of info from our inventory and stuff, putting that together. We're pretty fortunate. We have the technology to do that ourselves nowadays.
The meeting will probably be up here or?
Probably in the meeting room at the Public Works. Yep, yep. Because it might, the meetings will probably start around 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And then depending how long they take, they might be after 4:30, so.
Yeah, that 3 o'clock would work good for me.
Okay.
In the middle of the day, then it takes my whole day, in a sense, so.
Sure, okay. And emails, we'll probably be emailing too, so that'll help out with the drive.
Thank you.
Next, next agenda item I have is to review and approve a estimated quote from SRF Consulting to provide a Phase 1 archaeological review for Deep Lake Park. This is the final step before we can work out a contract with the DNR to approve our grant and begin using our grant funds. So I would just suggest, recommend approving the quote from SRF. And they will work with SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, office out of Minnesota, to approve this, the work we're going to start doing, so.
So is this for, to make sure there aren't any remains of people there?
It's to, so it goes, it's with archaeology and they work with the native tribes.
Yep.
And then also historic buildings and structures.
Okay.
It's, everyone that gets this or is given this grant has to go through this before they can sign a contract.
Do you know how long a process that might be?
They said they're willing to get started right away. Stuart from SRF's been in touch with Jeff and I, and they're willing to get it going right away. And they're, they're, I believe they could get it done quick, so, especially with no snow, so.
How the demo work, we'll have to wait until this is completed?
Yep, yep. Then hopefully the next step, we can, when we get the grant, we can send out bids for demo and get that rolling.
Okay, Board wishes.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Tom moves?
I'll second.
Steve seconds. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Cory, with the no snow, but yet the ground's continuing to melt, is logging up? Or are they running into problems because of mud or?
They, I believe they are going to run into issues, but as long as they're working in the morning, we're pushing, we're actually trying to push them to work more in the morning when it is still frozen. But the woods is still holding up fine. We're just trying to make them be careful, especially on township roads and county roads. But yeah, everything's going good. And there's definitely some frozen ground sales that they can't get in. And we can, we can work with them and maybe extending them, so.
Okay, anything else for Cory? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Well, we're just going to keep moving along because 9:30 isn't here. Is someone going to be here from the sheriff? Should we skip and go to?
We could pass on that. I'm not sure if Cory's going to be here or not. His item is really administrative, could have been on the consent agenda as well, so.
So we can do that now?
We could do it now.
Okay. So do you want to talk to us about this?
Sure. This is, this is just a continuing, this is this year's resolution to continue the joint powers agreement for this process. I don't believe that there's any financial commitment on our part. It's just one of those cross-jurisdiction agreements that we have so that we can continue to do our work.
Okay. And for the public, this is for the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Ted moves?
I'll second.
Steve seconds. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Gina's not here. Do you want to come up? Fred?
Good morning.
Morning.
So today, here to look for approval, to approve a bid by, to replace our, well, not replace, to add new services and storage for the Hubbard County network. I was made aware last year that through the BCA, they want all of our servers reside virtually on the same and within the same environment, which means within the same hardware. And they no longer approve that, approve of that. So now we have to actually have separate hardware, separate servers and stuff. They no longer can reside together. So we can't, we again, basically put together, well, we put together new servers and storage, which the Hubbard County network will migrate over to. And the CGS network will continue to reside on our current servers and storage for that, so. And we did, I did have this in the budget for 2024. And in doing it, we were looking at the full cost of it, but they were able to break it into, it's warranty for five years. So we figured we'd break it into a five-year payment, which keeps us at at the $26,327, so looking. And our current, our current storage under our current system is our network area storage that we have, that was due to be replaced end of this year, and that was also in the budget too. But in moving this over, we had enough storage on the, now that we'll move the county stuff off of it, we'll have enough of the storage that we won't need to replace that this year. That sort, we have, it's like two different NAS storages that we have on there. And the one that we were going to look at replacing, we will no longer need to because of the county information. We've moved on to the new storage and servers. So it kind of able to work it in there a little bit and not have to take on the full cost. And this is one thing that most of the other counties are having to do too. It's kind of been the talk with throughout the different IT directors and stuff of all of a sudden having this thrown on us to be compliant, so.
I see, Fred, that after the five years, the purchase option would be a dollar.
Yeah.
How much more life would this server have then at that point?
At that point, it'd be out of warranty. Currently, we were kind of, that's one thing too. We've been kind of replacing everything basically on a five-year basis anyways. So with doing that, that's where, at that point, it would become our, our, our storage, I mean, our equipment stuff. But we'd probably be looking at setting up to probably be replacing at that point too, after the five years. So I mean, it'd be out of warranty. Can it still run? Yes, it could probably still run another year to two years on that there. But then at that point, generally, we do see a failure rate that starts happening with it. But we could get by for another year, two years. But at that point, we'd look at probably putting something together to look at replacing at that point.
Do you know how old our servers for storage and that are currently?
Our one, our one storage is currently five years. It's that one's up, the warranty is basically runs out about the middle of this year. On our NAS storage, on our current servers, we actually have just replaced all three of those. So those are all under, and basically those are under probably for another three years. So that on the CGS network, those are basically within three years, we'll have to look at probably replacing those. But we do have all current licensing for all that, for the current stuff that'll be on our current network. All we really need to do is replace the storage on it. But the current servers, we just replaced one last year. And then we, so we should be good for, on that system for another three years.
So it sounds like you've got a few that you're rotating in and out type of a thing.
Yep, yep. So that, and that'll, it'll be kind of basically for that there, in about two years, we'll have to look at trying to replace, do some replacement on those servers for some of the, there's probably about, there's four different actual servers that run, that'll run the CGS network now. And we'll have to replace that, two of them within the next three years on that side. And then this here will go for another, for five years. So we won't have to do anything on the county side for five years from now, so, for the county network. But yeah, it was kind of one of the things that was thrown on last minute of, you know, to become compliant. And it was, they were going back and forth, like we're, as far as the virtual environments being on the same physical environment, they're separated. There really is no way to, for any security access on it. But BCA, they, they want to require that it's in separate physical environments. And I'm sure that's due to some of the new, probably the new AI stuff that's coming out, whether that has availability to try and somehow break that and risk the security on it, so.
Thank you.
Board wishes?
So leasing this stuff over a five-year period is a way to normalize and balance out the IT costs as opposed to trying to save $25,000 a year so we can spend 125, 150 every five years. It's very typical to do this.
We don't have the peaks and valleys.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve the local.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Fred.
All right, thank you, guys.
So we have six minutes till the public hearing. Do you think we could take care of the septic line?
We can certainly take care of the septic line.
Okay, let's do that. And then Gina, I think yours is going to take longer than six minutes, so, okay. So we're going to go down to the historic courthouse sewer line repair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I told Bobby that I would handle this because it's pretty straightforward and needs to be taken care of. We had some sewer backup at the end of the year and the, at the end of the fall in the basement of the lower courthouse. When they figured out where it was coming from, it's coming from the fact that a bunch of tree roots had penetrated the sewer line that's serving the jail, from the jail to the street. And a T comes in off of, off of the historic courthouse. So we've got three quotes before you. Gert's excavating for $30,000 is to, is the traditional way, to dig it up and put a new pipe in, make a big hole, put a new pipe in. And then Drain Services and Warrior Drain Solutions are both options to reseal those, to route out those drains, get the roots out of there, and then put a sealer in there. Basically, they're resealing the inside of the drain in place. It's a lot less, a lot less disruptive. They verify that it'll still have the capacity and the diameter it needs to serve that line. The Warrior Drain Solutions was the first person we talked to. I asked Bobby to get a quote to do it the traditional way, bring, you know, dig a deep hole and put, put something in there. And then Drain Services out of West Fargo brought a quote in too. And basically, the difference between quotes number one and number three is, is that Drain Services is not charging $12,000 for location and setup and getting ready. They're charging us for the work that they're going to do. Those are the two. So our recommendation is the low quote of $22,500 for Drain Services out of West Fargo, North Dakota to line that sewer drain in place.
It appears from what you're saying that it's much like lining a highway culvert. And I've seen that done many times and it really works wonders. It is tremendous.
As long as it's not collapsed and you have the diameter that you need for the flow, then lining is a very common method. And I think they think it's going to take about a week to get it done.
So has work been done to alleviate any of the excess humidity or potential bolt in there right now?
Yeah, we, after the first time it happened, we brought in a cleaning company and we cleaned it up. And then it happened again, and now we need to fix it before we can come in and clean.
Okay, so we need to get this done right away?
We need to get this done right away. I believe that they have the ability to get this done in the next few weeks.
I'm assuming they'll send a camera through or just make sure it's not collapsed or?
They've already got the video. They've already taken the video, so they know exactly what they're working with. And then the repair will be, and that's how we got the bid from the group out of West Fargo, was we had the video that we'd already paid for. So they'll be able to come in and do the work based on that, that information. Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is the damage that was done, is that something covered by MCIT?
Probably not. It probably doesn't reach the threshold where it's going to be worth submitting it, but we'll. I think it already has been submitted. It's just I don't know if the MCIT is going to pay or if the, if we're going to end up paying for it because it's less than our deductible. I believe the issue has been escalated to MCIT.
Do you make a motion?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve this bid, the whole bid.
I'll second.
Rain Services.
So Tom made the motion. Steve seconds. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Great. We got a lot done before the public hearing. Eric, you can come up. I still show we have, wait a minute, till 9:30, but. Jeff, do I, we don't need a motion to go into the public, do we need a motion?
You should have a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And a motion to close when we're there.
Yeah, okay. It's like watching paint dry.
Except for one pink dry, you don't have many people looking at.
Yeah, that's true. Well, in the meantime, we can entertain a motion. There's like 20 seconds left to go into the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to go into a public hearing.
I'll second.
Steve, okay. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Eric. We will now go into the public hearing for the, adding the school use.
Sure. So we had a application submitted a few months ago proposing that the Shoreland ordinance be amended to allow a school use category to the list of allowed uses in Article Four of the ordinance. That led to the Planning Commission making a recommendation to the board to incorporate that use as a conditional use on recreational development and general development classified lakes. The board then took up that recommendation and directed the Planning Commission to do some further work on their draft recommendation, which the Planning Commission did. That is the draft that is before you today for the hearing. The county board found that revised draft from the Planning Commission acceptable. And so there's a list of, excuse me, eight proposed performance standards that would apply to the use as a conditional use on those two lake classifications. And that's the general summary of the reason for the hearing this morning. I can go into further details on any aspect if the board has questions on anything.
I have a comment. Do you want to just comment on the letter from the D N R?
That's just their preliminary conditional approval standard procedure. Because it's a shoreline ordinance, we have to get any amendments that are made to that approved through the D N R. And so before we hold a public hearing, we send them a draft. So if they have any concerns before that point, they share those. And so this is kind of their form approval letter saying that it looks satisfactory to them and to let them know afterward if it is approved that that happened. And then they'll give us their final approval letter usually in a few weeks.
Thank you, Eric. The Planning Commission vetted this while I was sat in on the meeting and I don't have anything to add.
It seemed pretty straightforward, and we've known about this for a couple of months now. So I'll, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay.
Actually, we need to.
We have to take public comment if there isn't.
Oh, that's right. Does anyone have any public comment? Come forward.
You can, you can sit at the mic. It'd be easier. The mic's, but here, up front.
I don't want you to sign in over there. I just saw a little sign in. Okay. Okay. Good. Good morning. Hi, everyone. Okay, remind me, do I need to give you my address? Or? Just give us your name. Okay. And for the public, do you want to briefly state how this came about?
Oh, I would love to. Joanna Wallenberg. I wear a couple hats, both, all that applied probably to today. So I'm the board, I'm the school board chair for Heartland Lakes Community School. It's a public, a free public charter school, District 4302. We've been working on this project for about three years, and we've got all the approvals from the Department of Ed and an authorizer. So we are opening to kids kindergarten through sixth grade fall 2024, just a few short months away. Really, the lean of this school and the focus of this school is environmental education, outdoor learning, outdoor classrooms. So being in Hubbard County, we thought there's no better place for our families and kids to learn than right on the lake shore. So that led us to submitting this amendment proposal. Another hat I wear is that I own a resort. I don't know if I've ever shared that when I've gotten to talk to you all. So I do, I do spend a lot of time thinking about stewardship of the lakes and all the rules and laws. So from both perspectives, I just see so many benefits to this project in the community. I could go on and on, and I hope I get to come back and do that for a conditional use permit. But today, I just wanted to, I thought probably the most useful update for the board to hear, and maybe the public too, is, is in the last eight weeks since I, we've been, since I've been here and we've shared any updates, we have had our open enrollment period. So we got to open up our enrollment to kids and families in Hubbard County and the surrounding areas. And we had an overwhelming response. We had so many applicants that we had to hold a lottery, which is part of the state law around charter schools, to fill all of the grade levels, not just one, but every single grade level had more applicants than seats. So we really felt excited and encouraged. And we really heard Hubbard County families saying to us, we see ourselves in the vision of this school. We see ourselves in, in this kind of innovative learning model, something different. And we, we felt really excited about that from the public perspective. I also can tell you, three years into this project, that Minnesota has, Minnesota Department of Education has a lot of rules, oversight, regulations. Like I said, we've been working on it for three years. And in terms of making sure things are followed, thinking about, you know, the rules and oversight, I, I can assure you that M D E does a very thorough job. And I'm sure they will continue to. That's why we have quality schools in Minnesota. So thank you. I want to also make sure I say thank you. Thank you for the attention to this. Thanks for working on it to the Planning Commission too. We really appreciate, we really appreciate the innovative thing that can come to Hubbard County through this.
I'd like to add that when this was vetted by the Board of Adjustment, C U P, they didn't look at just the location that's being proposed right here. But this is set so if other schools want to start within Lake Shore, this is to cover them also. So.
Well, it sounds like you're ready and eager to go.
Oh, we are really eager. Yeah.
Any other public comment? All right. Thank you. So Ted, no, you can make a motion.
Well, we got closed.
Oh, that's right. Okay. So need a motion to close public comment?
I'll do it. I have my own motion.
Tom moves.
I'll second.
Ted will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed, none. So now we can take a motion.
I'll make a motion to update the shoreline management ordinance to allow schools.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Would take effect, oh, just standard practices that would take effect upon publication with the board meeting minutes?
Yes.
I thought that was part of my, my motion.
I thought so as well. I was just double checking.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we are back down to, let's see, just a second.
I'll make a motion to close the public.
Oh, no, we already did that.
We did that.
All right. I just wanted to make sure we did that. We closed public comment, but.
So Gina's not here, so. Do we want to go to the construction project? Is that what, do you want to do that?
Yes, Madam Chair, if we, if we could. We have Bruce Schwartzman here with B K V, and we have his associate Paul Michelle on Zoom to support that. We have had, B K V has had a lot of meetings, done a lot of work. We're, we had a follow-up meeting with all of the staff that are involved last week. And now they are here with, with their findings after those meetings. And this is our pre-design meeting with the architect. So at the end of this, we'd be considering authorizing the design process, schematic design process that we move it into, Bruce?
Yes.
And some communication with the city relative to the street vacation. So I will turn it over to Bruce.
Good morning, counsel. Good to see you, or commission, excuse me. I was at a council meeting last night, apparently. It's still in my head. So as, as Jeff mentioned, on November 7th, when you all approved this to proceed, basically, we're going into pre-design phase, which means really the pre-design is before you really get into developing detailed documents more. Project has, not to belabor it, but the project has multiple phases of schematic, which is where you nail down plans, elevation, and, and put the budget together again. Design development, where you put all the mechanical, electrical, and the engineering components into the layout of the building, get that coordinated, an estimate again, make sure you're on track, and then go into construction documents before you bid the project. This first phase was really, when we put together the initial planning before the November 7th board meeting, it was really a high level. You know, we had had some conversations with the sheriff's office, with Jeff, on the, some, some of the changes in the administration building. And so it was very high level. So this pre-design was really to dig into the information more and make sure we were heading in the right direction. We could do what we needed to do. And, and where is the budget based on any changes came out of pre-design? So we, we met with the sheriff's office a, a number of times. We've met with county attorney, assessor, auditor, and whatnot, reviewing some of their spaces, potential changes for their areas. And we've had a number of iterations of the plans to make sure, okay, does this lay out the way you want it to lay out? Does it work? We also had a meeting with the city, and I think it was mentioned in there as well, by vacating Front Street, is that we, we heard preliminarily that that was an acceptable approach, but building that garage in addition to the law enforcement center is contingent on that being able to occur. So before we came back to you, we wanted to make sure, yes, that can occur. And we were reassured. We met with the city administrator, one of the councilmen, I think their.
Public Works Director.
Public Works Director, as well as their, their city engineer. And they all reassured us, it's very, very workable. There's some nuances to be worked out as far as some street maintenance and things like this, but really, really minor. So having said all that, I don't know, Jeff, if you want to flip through this, I could go through the plans. And, and Commissioner, I'm here for council, Commissioner, I'm here for any questions you all have as we go through this. So again, those were the primary on, on the, on page three, we identified the primary bullets of what we did at this point, the steps to vacate the street. We did hire a surveyor. I think it's about $6,500 to have a surveyor come out and identify the property lines and all utilities. Because as you start a project, you want to make sure you understand where your setbacks are, where your limitations are, where all your requirements are. So we're having a survey done now that should be done in the next couple of weeks. Page four of five starts to show really the overall, that's an aerial, you can see the existing law enforcement, the existing government center, and you see off to the west, the, the squad, the law enforcement garage and the Sallyport. Now, part of the, the early plan is the law enforcement garage, we estimated about 11,000 square feet, and that's what the initial preliminary budget was based on. We got a list of equipment that the sheriff does have and all the various facilities. And the idea is to bring this to one location for most efficient use and access. So the garage did grow some, but what you see there is, is based on the, on the, the apparatus and the equipment that the sheriff's office has, allows for an evidence, a secured evidence bay as well. And then the Sallyport, where the, where the vans or the ambulance or whatever is going back and forth to the jail, would pull into that new Sallyport in the center. By building that new Sallyport, it then allows us to do the intake and booking remodeling. So if we go to the next page, you can see just off, you see the, the, the law enforcement garage that we talked about, and we've identified all the various vehicles that are in there and all the trailers and whatnot. And we've identified a Sallyport in the middle that has the size to accommodate if it's ever needed for evacuation, whatnot, a bus of any large substantial area. But then the area just to the right of that is the existing Sallyport area in the jail. And by building the new Sallyport, it allows us to build new holding cells, a pre-book area to do all the treatment and, and, and initial upfront booking and processing to expand that and support the sheriff's office, which has, it's not just Hubbard County, there's a lot of counties around the state that are having with mental health, health issues and drug issues. And what we saw in COVID, the ability to hold people and keep them separated from others for a period of time for evaluation is very, very important. So this does improve the booking area as it is. So you can see we've added basically three cells on the, what would be the north side. We've added two cells in the center with a sub-day room. So again, if somebody has to be quarantined for disease, they can be put into that. It, the DOC would comply, that would comply with DOC requirements to allow them to be in there for a period of time while evaluation is occurring. And then the pre-book area allows for officers, the, the local police department, and anybody else to come in and do their initial process before they're turned over to the sheriff's office. So that's, and you can see there's a lot of detail that's gone in the plans now. So we've, we've had some excellent meetings. The next page then.
I just have a question. So in, in your conversation, I, I understand you had a lot of planning. So the, the sheriff's department feels that the number of cells added would be adequate for some time to come?
Yeah. This should, this should really accommodate your county. I, I don't know if the sheriff's here today, but I, this should, this should accommodate your, your county for many, many years.
Scott, you were involved in a lot of those conversations. Joe, Henry, the jail administrator, was involved, and Cory was there for most of the meetings as well. So I heard the consensus was this will serve us for a good while.
Good. Thank you.
Eleven cells, I'm sorry, eleven cells in a, eleven cells in a booking area really should address your needs. We're, you know, we're doing some study work with St. Louis County up in Duluth now, and they've got a much bigger facility, but it's not many more than that that they need. So it's, it's a good, accommodated.
I just have a layout question. I was looking, looking at the kitchen area, and it looks like you had to get supplies into the kitchen, you got to go through that hallway down to the door and then to the kitchen. Would it be easier to have another door in the Sallyport? Because you got to go to the Sallyport anyway to get supplies in the kitchen.
Yeah. Yes, Commissioner, I'm, I'm, that's a good question. What they asked, Tim. My, my concern is, the west wall probably has kitchen equipment on it, which would make putting another door or something like, like that in there. I think the thought was, with some of this, with any correctional facility, you don't want to just allow people to come in easily. Of course, there's a Sallyport, two doors of, of control and lock. This would allow any delivery to go ahead and stage and put any supplies in the Sallyport before they're brought into the kitchen. So they could leave supplies out there before they bring them in. But we'll talk to them about that door access. I, I see what you're saying. And it might, might be more convenient in another way.
It's already improved because the access to the kitchen is separated from the Sallyport and not in one of the parking stalls in the Sallyport. So.
And that's how it currently is, right?
That's how it currently is, is they enter from one of the Sallyports.
Yeah. My question is, isn't there somewhere else that the sheriff's department can store all of this equipment instead of using this square footage for storing of a snowmobile trailer, a boat, side by side? It just seems like an inefficient use of space that could be utilized to improve the overall footprint, to make it more usable.
So I'll answer a little bit by, if you can see where the south line is of the entrance here, that's kind of the original space that we planned, and that's why we had 11,000 square feet. And then we brought this south as far as we thought we could. And it, it's really about, it, it is really just about having everything all in the same place. It's security. There are often options to, to store things elsewhere. And that's one of the, one of the decisions we'll have to make when we get to the last page and start talking numbers. But from the standpoint of access and having, having these things where our staff are, as opposed to the staff having to be here and then go and pick them up, yeah, it, this is ideal, probably not essential.
So is the one point almost four million strictly what was added on for the trailer storage?
No, no, we're going to show that, we're going to show you the balance of that on the next slide, I believe.
Okay.
You know, just when I look at the parking lot over there, all of the squads that show up throughout the day take up spark, parking space that our own employees over at the other building need. Otherwise, they're parking on the street all the time.
Yep.
And it's just, you know, it, it becomes cumbersome just for people to go in and out of the parking lots. So, and then they change the parking arrangement, the way the vehicles are parking there, which may help the law enforcement, but it doesn't help everybody else that uses the parking lot.
Is that one big open space building? So there's flexibility to it then?
Just a big, and right now, we're pricing it as a precast building, as a simple precast.
So there's actually two pieces. This, this center long rectangle is the, is the Sallyport. And then this piece is the garage, the storage space. And part of the survey work is to identify the, the height, the floor height for each of these spaces. They may not be in the same floor height. They probably won't be. As a matter of fact, right here, you're seeing a ramp up, because the existing Sallyport is probably about 30 inches above. As a matter of fact, right here, you're seeing a ramp up, because the existing Sallyport is probably about thirty inches above street level right now. So there's, the survey will tell us what that ends up looking like. But, but this is the, this is the Sallyport, this is the drive-through for supplies for transporter prisoners, for everything else. And this is essentially replacing that old garage that we have over there now with, with the newer space, a bigger space that allows things to be inside.
Hey, I guess comment on the, on the storing the trailers and the equipment? Currently, we have stuff stored kind of all over a bunch of different locations. Impound Lot, North Substation, Fairgrounds. So yeah, it's just kind of spread out all over. And even with those facilities, we are constantly rotating things in and out based on the season. Some, some things aren't even in, under a roof at this point, just kind of based on season. So yes, this would consolidate everything into one, one place and give us the opportunity to have everything, you know, for most part, under, under a roof and inside. If, if we need a certain piece of equipment and it's, it's stored up at the Farden Substation and we need it down here, then we have to, you know, if it's an emergency situation, it's an extra hour to get up there, get that piece of equipment, get back down here. Or vice versa, I mean, if we needed something up north and it's stored here, but that then cuts the, the trip in half because typically we'd have someone here that could hook up a bill. We don't have a facility where we can keep our command trailer hooked up to our command van. So that's another time piece that we may have the command van stored at one facility and the trailer stored at another. So we have to go pick up the van, the vehicle, go get the van, hook it up. So yes, this is a, is a convenience thing, but it, it also goes a little further than that where it makes us a lot more efficient when we are potentially responding to, to emergency calls.
Anything else, or can we move forward?
Next page, page six, then starts to talk about some modifications to the, to the sheriff's admin area itself. When you come in the building now, you're kind of into a very small little lobby space. It's very cramped and inadequate waiting space. And there's a lot of times they do have people waiting in the hallways that are kind of crowded in that space. Plus they have interaction with, with video visitation, things like that. This new option proposes adding a new vestibule to the exterior of the building. So adding a new, new piece to allow for better flow and better waiting of those individuals coming to see inmates, whether that's, whether it's family, whether it's clergy, whether it's counseling, additional space for those people. It re- uh, configures the admin office a little bit to provide a better window access for when those people come in directly to where they are, to where they can help them as they come in this vestibule. So you can see there's a new sidewalk that comes in off the east, and then you turn right going into this new weather vestibule, that space. When we did this, the other thing we needed is we needed a supervisor's office for admin over there as well. So we added an administrative supervisor to that space also that was just off of that records admin, admin area. The other component that we talked about back when we were talking about the preliminary plan previously, was one of the goals was to, to be able to relocate dispatch so that we can, we can attract more people. It's not within a secured perimeter. It's, it's, it's handicap accessible, it, it's just a better opportunity to get more people in for those types of jobs. So we moved dispatch into the area and kind of shuffled some of the existing space. What we found unfortunately was we could fit some space, we couldn't fit all of it in there. It just didn't work. It was, it was squeezed in there to where it wouldn't even be a viable, viable working environment. So we've created an additional kind of bump to the building on the east side that would kind of work with the new entrance piece that's, that's coming out as well, that would allow for appropriate space for dispatch. And again, we can get windows in there, but we're planning three, three consoles that would support dispatch in that space. Some of the other minor things that are associated with that is, was taking the current squad room, the patrol room, and turning that more into a training room, which is really more just a furniture and AV kind of exercise. The space is already there, it's just moving some things around a little bit. And that's the large training room that's shown off just to the west of dispatch. And then lastly, we're moving those patrol workstations from that big room to make a training room. We're moving those into a smaller room down on the, on the south side that went, would become the kind of the patrol report writing, kind of check-in space for those individuals that are on the road. Sheriff's Office and Chief Deputy, even though they're shown white, there's no changes to those, to those spaces. So that's the piece on the, on the east side of the building. The next page then goes into, oops, mine is not working. Next page goes into the cell block. And, and again, one of our nor, earlier goals was to subdivide some of these housing units. The, the issue is when you have somebody that doesn't get along, or you have issues of classification and you're in a large unit, you can't use some of these other cells. So it minimizes your ability and, and at, at times probably created issues where you had to potentially send inmates out of the county because you didn't have proper separations of some of these. So in the housing unit furthest to the, to the west, we're showing a new subdivision. So we're basically taking that big unit and by state statute, there's some individuals that, you know, depending upon their sentence and whatnot, can be held in the cell twenty-three hours day and only hour, hour day. Doesn't allow for good rehabilitation, doesn't allow for good treatment. But again, because this was one big unit, it, it was very cumbersome and, and staff intensive to try to work with that. Now you have these sub-day rooms where you can actually put in the inmates with separate classification and whatnot in there, have appropriate separation, allow them the ability to get out of their cells and sit in an area where they can sit and read and have visitation and things within those sub-day rooms. So all those new sub-day rooms, basically four new sub-day rooms off of that area. Doing a similar situation in the two other housing units to the east, we're adding two sub-day rooms to each one of those. And again, what that does is increase the ability for separation and segregation within the housing units.
Jeff, does that do anything with staffing issues? Do we need more or less staff or the same or?
So I think we're moving from six to eleven subdivisions, is that?
Sounds about right, not to check.
Approximately, and, and I, I don't believe we thought that there was gonna be a change in staffing needed to operate this way. As a matter of fact, what this probably does is, what do we have? Trying to remember the number. Typically, a jail was considered full when you were at eighty percent of the number of beds that you have, right? By having this greater degree of separation, we're probably pushing that number closer to ninety, which means we are expanding the number of beds that we have available for use without adding more beds. So that's one of the reasons why having the separation at the intake and having the additional separation in the jail, we believe that this is gonna serve us for a good time to come. Last week, Scott, I think I asked what the average daily population had been hanging out at, and you thought it was around sixty? So that, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we were at, we were running at eighty-eight, close to ninety, and really bumping against not having places to put people. So, and prior to that, we were at forty-five and we were, we were subletting out spaces to other counties, right? So this will give us a lot more flexibility and barring members skyrocketing again, we should be in good shape.
So at the, at the managers meeting last week, we did have a little discussion on this. And I had just read in the NACO magazine about how a lot of people sitting in county jails are because they can't make bail. And so I asked Jonathan about that, and he said, no, here, people are serving sentences. So correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but this is, this is needed to, for the people that are housed there for a-
Correct, these are long-term inmates, they're, they're not here on bail and don't have the opportunity for bail because they've been, they're, they're being held under sentence. So, um, yes, the, the people held under bail here in Hubbard typically are, are fairly short-term stays unless, you know, obviously it's depending on, on the charge or the crime. The, the misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor crimes, they're typically not here for a very long period of time.
Just a, a question for Scott. What's the longest a person can be held at the county jail?
If they're sentenced to anything over than a year, typically they'll go to the state correctional facility.
Okay.
So in general, up to a year.
Okay, thank you.
One of the next steps, Commissioner, is to meet with the Department of Corrections. We, we have had some preliminary conversation with, with Joe and Chris Toma. Chris Toma is, used to be the head of inspections and correct for the corrections division. He's, he's now left the department and does his own private consulting. But we did have a preliminary talk with him, and he believes that we probably should be able to maintain the same pa, staffing. What we're talking about, we want to review with the OC first, just to make sure we can confirm that.
Thank you.
Notwithstanding any future requirements.
So I think that was, if you go to the next page, really, the next page starts to show, just for general information, how things are gonna be phased. Specifically with the jail, we have to look at other areas as well. But clearly you can't send the inmates home, say, come back in a week, once the construction's done, we'll see you then. It's, and, and the other thing that's really bad in a jail construction project is you don't want to have to house them out in another county where they're gonna charge you sixty-five, seventy bucks a day to house them. So the plan is to shift people around as there's space available. You do have some extra stay of space, we'll make that work. But you, you can see here, you, we, we're, we're right now thinking, actually this says two, we're thinking there's really potentially three phases that could occur. But building the new law enforcement garage, allowing that space, building out pieces of the new intake area to allow them to temporarily use part of that for booking, so we can remodel booking, remodeling one housing unit while the other ones are used for occupancy. So we'll, we'll work with the sheriff's office and everybody on this. I should also mention too, that one of our goals within the next couple of months is to work with Jeff to, to advertise and look for a construction manager for the project. Projects that are complex like this, that have owner occupancy while they're occurring, we found, well, probably ninety percent or ninety-five percent of the projects, we do these now, and government projects all involve construction managers. And construction managers versus general contractors tend to be more ingrained and more involved in the project. You know, have a certain person assigned to be on that project, to, to be there to make sure things are going right, shutting down utilities, whatever's happening. We've got a request for proposal, we were gonna work with Jeff on, to try to get a selection of, of some potential construction managers to help with the project. Once we get somebody on board, we're, again, that'll be a second, a third set of eyes for the county to help look at the plan, help look at the cost, and the phasing will be a big aspect of that as well.
I had one question I was gonna ask you before, and I forgot. So if we move dispatch, what does that area become?
So it's gonna remain central control for the jail.
Okay.
So you'll still have door control, camera monitoring, things like that.
Okay.
Page nine, as we go into this, then starts to get into some potential remodeling that we've been looking at in the government center for some efficiency of space, relationships of staff, things like this. On the, on the first floor downstairs, the, the idea was to utilize some underutilized space for the auditor. Get rid of the large gate that's, that's closing that section off, have a couple set of double doors, and move some audit, the auditor and, and some additional space over there. It's more contingent to some of the other locations. And then there was a request from the attorney's office as well for an office and remodeling in a small conference room, relocation, kind of some additional space allocated for them, as well as in the space directly adjacent to the courthouse, adding an additional attorney conference room as well. So we're showing, subdividing that into three spaces. So that's, that's kind of where we are with this. We're, these are still being worked through with the, with the various departments, but we're, we think we're heading in the right direction based on their request.
Remember all of the, any of the work in the government center came at the request from Jonathan relative to the attorney's office. So the primary thing that we're doing is, is taking the, proposing taking the law library for additional attorney space. You can see this little tiny kiosk here, that's the new law library. It's a couple of terminal access, which is what's required.
Yeah, and the law library also said that currently the books aren't being used that are in there, so this would be, yeah.
And then when we looked at this, we really thought, at one point, we thought we needed to use the space on the front for additional attorney's space. But when we planned this out, we realized we didn't necessarily, which gives us an opportunity to get the auditor all on one floor. This again is one of the changes in scope. So that's, that's a part of that.
And then on the second floor, the, the main thing on the second floor was really to create better sightlines from staff up to the counter, so that they're not so isolated back there. So really it was, it was some minor modi, modifications to some office space that's on the west side to bring some of the workstations up around the corner, again, to staff has better visibility and access to the counters for support. So we had been showing this public meeting room in the front, but I, I, I thought we had dropped that, Jeff.
Yeah, I think we, I think we did. So the conference room that's right up here moves to the back so that we can put workstations in on the west side of that, of that space, increases some sightlines. We're showing the potential of doing a little bit of work on the front counters to, for it to be more reflective of how we're actually staffing that counter than the five workstations that were previously up there. And then we'd be doing some consolidation of, of the public facilities, the computer terminals, the search terminals, the seating. We would be showing the passport room, reconfiguring from north-south to east-west, taking up less space. Mostly just moving, moving some of the interior walls in, in this space to, to get better functional workspace.
The next page then is a schedule, what we're anticipating. And what we're showing really is now, you know, as we're going into, in February, we're wrapping up this kind of pre-designed phase. The, the next phases are the ones I talked about, the SD to DD and the CD phases before you actually go out to bid. Roughly two to three months for each of those. We'd be coming back in front of you beginning of April, I think, with a more refined and, and confirmed budget of exactly where we are. We know the budget now, and then we'll get into that, is, is really a good range. It's not gonna go higher, if anything, hopefully some, some of the numbers would come, become lower, depending upon some of your decisions today as well. But again, the idea in the schedule is that by the time we hit August, September, we're bidding the project, where then we've got a period of time, a little bit of procurement where, while things have gotten better for material supplies and things like this, some jail items, detention frames, detention hardware, detention glass are still long-time, lead time items. So we know that there'll be a period of time before really they can get started in construction on that. However, construction on the government center, that could start pretty much right away. We're assuming that's a two-phase deal as well to maintain staff. In the government center, you have the ability to, to, some people could work from home for a period of duration, we can figure that out. But we would work through the phasing in that piece as well to figure it out. We're assuming the jail, as I noted, is potentially three phases that we're looking at with the final, everything being wrapped up in the jail as we get into twenty-twenty-seven. So it's definitely a, a, a long period. Again, this is preliminary schedule, once the construction managers onboard, we'd lock this down a little tighter with them and figure it out from there. But right now, this, this schedule based on the type of construction, the amount of construction seems to be a reasonable approach.
So one thing with the government center construction, you see it showing phase one, starting twenty-twenty-five. We might, we have an election this year.
Oh.
We're not doing anything downstairs until after the, until after the election. And one of the proposed modifications would be with, we reconfigure the front offices, we'd move some attorneys or attorney's office staff there, remodel that space, move them back. And then phase two would be the ability to bring auditor's office staff down. The existing auditor's office would be election support. We don't really have a need for, to put somebody in there right now. But if we put them downstairs into this space without any workrooms, we'd need to leave that space for them for now, for their equipment storage. I don't know if you saw on the way in, they're using the conference room for staging and doing all the work that they would. They'd be able to do that here now. So that's kind of the, the plan, is what that would look like.
So I had a constituent ask me yesterday what the bonding process would be involved.
Yep, we'll get to that in, just after he runs through the numbers.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
I was at the Ellers Public Finance Conference Seminar last week and spent a little time with Bruce Kimmel, so we'll, we have an update.
Excellent. The next page is, is where we are on the, on the estimate as well. And, and you can see the jail work, we're, we're estimating that construction between six to six-point-eight. And that, that jail portion does include the law enforcement garage in that number as well. So the Sallyport and everything else we showed within the jail is in that six to six-point-eight number. The law enforcement center itself, the remodeling and that work up front- The law enforcement center itself, the remodeling and that work up front, roughly six or seven-hundred-sixty-six-thousand to about nine-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. The work in the government center that we've identified, again, we we're we're trying to err on the conservative side right now until we get things locked down a little bit more, but seven-hundred-and-twenty-four to about nine-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand for that work. We know there'll be some minor utility work around the site, potentially in the front as well as in the rear, so we know there's some IT cabling, I think, which is the primary. There's some overhead power line, we'll have to work with the power company on, but we've allocated some money for site utility work and site work, which we're assuming is some paving and things like that for the new garage as well. Which brings us to about seven point eight to about nine million dollars construction cost. To that, we've added a construction contingency. The goal is to not use all of that at all. There'll be a part of it for some refinements of various nuanced things, part of it's like a design contingency and whatnot. Part of it's a construction contingency, at least half of that's construction contingency that you're hoping you don't use during the project, but it's there for the unknowns if they dig something up and we hit into something and there's a small change order. So there's about six hundred thousand dollars or so in there right now for construction contingencies. But the total with the contingencies and the construction is the construction amount for the project is between nine point, about nine, a little over nine million and about ten point five is where we're where we're estimating the budget to be. On top of that is the soft cost for the, any new furniture that's that's needed, any new appliances are needed, the architectural engineering fees, the geotechnical. Once we have things locked down, we're going to have some soil boring is done to make sure there's no surprises in the ground that have causes to have to have a special foundation design. But that accounts for the soft cost, which brings the estimated project to about ten point seven to about twelve point one. Now, it was an increase of about three million dollars of the things we talked about. So if you take the three million out from the previous numbers that we showed the board, we're pretty close to where we were, five hundred thousand plus or minus to where we were. So we're pretty, we feel pretty comfortable that the numbers we gave you before, given the added items that were identified, and we have those bulleted there, the increased size of the of the squad, well, the LEC garage, the increased Sallyport size, added workstations and janitors closets in the housing units that we hadn't allowed for before, mezzanine railing system. So it's a good idea, and we're doing this on a number of jails around the, not just in Minnesota, but around the country, actually. There've been a number of suicide attempts and things like this by inmates to go up on mezzanine areas and try to hurt themselves. We find a lot of counties are going ahead and installing grated systems that go up to the ceiling or whatnot to prevent that potential liability to to the individual and to the county. So right now, we do have a fairly large amount. We just had a project in St. Croix, Wisconsin, bid, so we use that cost per square foot in this estimate as well. So we added railing systems in those two units, A and B, the additional records and dispatch area that we talked about, and then some is increased scope in the government center, which accounted for the change. The other thing we didn't identify, and Jeff, we'd have to talk about this, I guess, we have done some projects where there's a a savings for material taxes on on the on the project. And we didn't identify it here, but it's something I think we should look at. We've done a number of county projects where you have to bid labor and material separately, and you and you take a combined bid, but you're you you track material and labor separate during the bidding or during the bidding, as well as during payment applications during the project. Now, when we did Detroit Lakes Police Station, that we did it that way as well, and they save material taxes. We did a fire station down in Rochester, we've done some projects for La Sora County, where they all utilize that material sac tax savings. And in in essence, what it comes down to is if you take ten or twelve million, just to give you an idea of potential savings, and you say thirty percent roughly for material cost, that's about three million, three to four million dollars is of material cost for the project. If you take our tax rate, which is, what, six point eight roughly or so, it it could be a savings of three hundred thousand dollars plus or minus. So I think it's worth looking into a little bit more. It is something for the county attorney to chime into. We have had a couple of clients that felt like if they got audited, it it would, they it wasn't worth it for them. But we've had a lot of clients that feel that it has been worth it, so we've utilized that tax savings. So anyway, something to consider.
So I know when we look at the scope increases, we've identified that roughly a little over half of that, maybe two-thirds, is coming from the change in the square footage and some of the change in the finishings, as he's just identified, with railings and the jail pods come from the jail, and a little, you know, a million or less is coming from the change in the scope in the government center. When I talked with Bruce Kimmel about bonding for a project like this, just a reminder that in twenty-four and twenty-five, we have a full payment on the existing jail bonds, and then twenty-six, we drop off six hundred thousand dollars on that for three more years, and then it goes away. So the timing of this is relative to the timing of being able to take up a new debt service schedule that wouldn't impact the amount of money that we need from the levy to support debt service significantly. And there's lots of options. The the Heritage Project was backend loaded, so we had, we we phased into smaller payments at the end and larger payment, or at the front, and larger payments at the end. There's a lot of options with that. The good news is, right now, interest rates for public debt issuance have come back down again. We're under four percent. And Bruce says they 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 see a trend where it's it's coming down to be a lot cheaper for us to issue that debt. Probably a third of of this price increase would be made up in in interest savings. When I ran some numbers, I think we'd probably be a hundred thousand dollars a year more over twenty years instead of two hundred thousand dollars a year more over twenty years to carry this debt. So that, and with the capital funds that we've set aside, we've allocated for twenty-four. You can see we've got a three-year construction project into, we go even into twenty-seven? We even go into twenty-seven? So we have the ability to buy down that amount that's needed for debt by allocating some of that capital cost towards this project as an option. As a matter of fact, if we look at twenty-five, six, and seven, we could buy it down to the original price if we if we so chose. So we have a lot of flexibility with that. When I talked to Bruce about the numbers, he said that in your, our current debt schedule and our and our current retirement and and our current bond rating, which is very good, this would not, this would be something that'd be easy enough for us to carry relative to that without it having a an impact on the local tax levy. So our current debt payment for this year is eight hundred and eighty, I think it's like, I think, eight twenty, somewhere in there that we that we allocated for that. We could extend that, the life of that debt, and not have that number increase significantly. By significant, I mean a hundred thousand or less.
Is the bonding done in stages or over a couple of years, or you do it all at once?
We would very likely, for the best bang on the buck, we would it, we would issue it all at once, someplace that's appropriate relative to this construction schedule. We can issue a resolution that we intend to pay ourselves back for capital costs that we incur before we issue that debt, and and then hold that money to use for this project. So the timing of that would be, but the issuance of it would would likely be in one issue, just because we would get the best rates from people who are interested in purchasing that that debt. But it wouldn't be, I doubt that it wouldn't be in twenty-four, it would very likely be in twenty-five. If we're showing costs in twenty-four, we can issue a resolution that says either, we we would issue a resolution that says we intend to pay ourselves back out of that bond, and then we could choose not to and just resize the bond to say we bought, we've paid cash for the first portion of this project. So there's a lot of, a lot of flexibility. Bruce Kimmel is going to be here next week, talking about EDA and talking about financial management planning. And I could ask him to throw in, I can give him this latest timeline and budget number, and he could give us a couple of different options while he's here. I'm sure he'd be happy to do that.
Any other questions? So there's no action needed on this, this is strictly informational?
This is strictly informational. We do, relative to the street vacation process, what we do need, and if we're, if we're intending on on moving forward with the timeline that we have, we would probably want to move relatively quickly. We need a letter from the Hubbard County Board to the Park Rapids City Council, formally asking for the vacation of Front Street for that amount of space, and authorization for myself to work with the project relative to applying for zoning permits, because we're building right directly to that lot line where that currently is. We're going to have to apply for a variance relative to that project. So this administrative work is necessary before we can get, move forward with any of the other stuff. So if there were action, it would be to authorize the administrator and the and the architect to prepare and deliver a letter to the city of Park Rapids requesting the street vacation and to apply for necessary permits.
And I believe a street vacation is, they have to hold a public hearing on that?
They will. They will. And our vacation is asking for half of Front Street between Second and Third.
What would the board like to do?
Well, we need a motion, right? To require, for the letter, authorizing their letter? Yeah, yeah, I'll make that motion to authorize that letter for vacation.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there further discussion? I just have one question going back to the project pre-design.
Yeah.
So if we move forward with this letter, then that that just gives you...
We're not saying yes to twelve million dollars yet?
No, I know that, but but it it looks like we're so far in support of the project, so then you guys will move forward on the next step on that, right?
Yes.
And we're not locked into anything.
No, and 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 Bruce, you said the next thing would be the design would be back before the board in April.
Yeah, exactly. We'll come back in front of you at every point of this to make sure that we're on track, and you have a chance to chime in as a group.
At one of the next meetings, we're going to be getting to the point of when we send RFPs out for construction management, and when we, then we're going to be spending real money. So it's good that Bruce Kimmel will be here, can talk to you about what that debt might look like, that the next opportunity, we have to look at this. But if we have a, if we have a a schedule that shows groundbreaking in fall of 2024, at some point, we're 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 continuing to say, yes, we want to see what this looks like, and we believe we can support this project in some scope. And then that scope is yet to be determined at a future meeting.
And and Jeff, the the construction managers' pre-construction phases are typically fairly minor?
Yep, fairly minor.
Ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars, somewhere in there.
And we've got money in this year's capital for jail project planning, so that's where that's coming from.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good day.
So before we take up the flag, I'm going to go back up here. Scott, it was nice to have you here for the discussion. If you were here under sheriffs, we did that without you.
Okay.
Passed unanimously.
I meant to tell him that, but I knew he wanted to be part of this conversation as well.
All right, thank you.
And so Gina, we're going to have you come next.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Your agenda item today is departmental clothing policies. Currently, departments that are listed in this agenda item, Highway Department, Solid Waste, NRM, Natural Resource Management, and the Environmental Services Department have departmental clothing policies. Couple department managers came forward and had discussions with with Jeff, and then we had meetings together with the departments as well to to talk about them. They each have, they have individual needs of their departments, but they also have very similarities as well, too. A lot of the similarities were, came into play for Human Resources was, was the processing and the facilitating of the the clothing policies. So we came to the new policy written for each department. The main items that we came to in the facilitating of that was, previously, there was expense reimbursement. They had up to three hundred and fifty dollars that they could spend on job-related or safety-related clothing. They'd go purchase something with their own money, they'd bring in a receipt. If it was not embroidered, it would go through payroll and we would tax it. If it was embroidered, it would go through the auditor's department, and they would pay it. We would have to make sure between our two departments that somebody wasn't going over that dollar amount. Individual departments were having to track to make sure that they weren't going over those amounts, et cetera, et cetera. So we, the request was to be able to have just a a contribution of a clothing to these employees in these departments that were affected by that. So we came up with just having a contribution that would be distributed to them twice a year. It'd be inclusive in the January thirty-first pay paycheck, and then in the July thirty-first paycheck. The amount was, would be increased to four hundred and twenty-five dollars because of this contribution going through payroll, it will be taxed to the employee then as well, too. They would receive that money, and then they would have the ability to purchase that job-related, safety-related clothing for their needs and their employment. So that's the 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 reasoning for the change of having the contribution of the update of the policy, and then the request of having the dollar amount increased as well, too. So the request today is to approve each individ, I mean, it can all be done in one motion, but would be for the department policies that were provided to you.
Now, is is staff receiving these dollars and then have the option to buy the clothing, or it's required that they buy the clothing with those dollars?
The staff are receiving these dollars and then listed within the policies are, you know, there to be provide, they're to be purchasing with that money for the job-related clothing and the safety-related items for their their positions. So these are positions where they they are out in in the field, you know, and needing to have, you know, weather or safety or warm, you know, warm clothing.
Steel toe boots, things like that, that are necessary for your job position.
Yeah. My my question goes along with Ted, for the two hundred and seventy-five for office employees, can they opt, can they take the money and opt not to spend it on clothing? Or is, are you doing an honorary system that you're just assuming they're buying clothing?
Yes, yes, yep.
We have, we have positions like the steel toe boots, where are they required to have steel toe boots?
We do have some positions, and that's where it it is listed in the, like, the Highway Department. There are items that we have contribution, that the county does does pay for and provide to the employees. A lot of that is based on OSHA requirements that...
Like hard hat hats and...
Those types of eye protection wear, and, yes, right.
So this is primarily, makes it administratively easier, from a tax purpose, easier. They are on their own to to make sure, A, they have to spend the money. Well, we have no control on how they spend the money, but we do have control that they use the appropriate clothing, and they have the appropriate PPE when they are working in the field. And this is our ability to say, we provided some compensation towards that, and you're required to make sure that you show up to the job prepared to do the job.
It's like, I know with my regular job, I have a uniform that I pay for. Every week, they take something out of my check, and the course of linen service cleans them all and everything, so it's required that I wear those.
It it will, this way. It it will cost the county more because the price has gone up, and because it'll be a hundred percent paid out. We, in the past, have not had people use a hundred percent of the allowance that they have. The number, I believe, is, I want to say it's seven or eight thousand dollars more that we're, if we do this, than what we paid out last year, and two or three thousand more than than if we didn't change the numbers. So there is, there is some of that spread across those departments. It's negligible, falls into operating budgets.
Well, but you may have people purchasing items that they need to do their job more regularly. If they are getting worn down, say, a pair of boots, if they have cracks in them, they might be more apt to purchase a new pair of steel toe boots instead of wearing old ones that are probably insufficient for what they're doing.
I hope so, yep.
Right. Okay, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Steve moves, is there a second?
Okay, I'll second.
Tom, second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those motion carries. Thank you for waiting patiently as we kind of moved around today. Okay, so we are back to the underadministration for the proposed new state flag and state seal. Jeff had enclosed a resolution and then a letter from two different counties. I think all of us got an email today from one person supporting the new flag. All the other comments that I've received from the public have been asking for the old flag to be retained or a different process used because... All the other comments that I've received from the public have been asking for the old flag to be retained or a different process used because people felt that it should have gone legislatively.
I've gotten one, one against this resolution, but it's one constituent and it's a constituent I don't agree with. Don't mind saying it.
So Madam Chair, can I just provide a little context?
Absolutely.
So the background information is the process was created by legislation last year. And at this point, unless the legislation in this year takes action against the proposed design and emblem, it'll become effective at the end of the year. But the state flag is only required to be flown outside of the state offices. The fact that counties display or the state flag is completely optional. So there is no requirement for us to upgrade to a new state flag. There is no requirement for us to change out any of our labels or anything like that. That's why I changed the recommendation here from consideration of the resolution to consideration of the county policy to fly the state flag. The appeal process at this point, and if the board wants to issue a resolution or a letter like other counties have, that's certainly within their right. But that would basically be an appeal to the legislature to intervene in this year's process. The authority that the county has is whether their policy is to display the state flag or not. And, and I just, you know, I remind everyone in the room, when we stand up and say the pledge, we look that way. We're not looking this way.
Would there be any penalty for continuing to use the old state flag?
The only consideration, the only possible penalty is if there is any public feedback from people who supported the new one and opposed this one and could show up. The same as if you wanted to fly a green flag on St. Patrick's Day or any other optional flag that you're not required to fly. You may open yourself up for public comment. So if it stays there and your intention is that that's supportable, all you'd have to deal with is public comment about it because that's kind of the informal policy of the board if we don't remove it. But there is no penalty. There's no penalty, there's no requirement.
So how about, he came up at MRC and talked about how, you know, there's seals, some, some of the counties, I guess, have seals in their floors. The State Patrol and the Sheriff's Departments are, so you're saying none of that would have to be changed?
None of that is mandated. Because we're not, we're a county. So this legislation specifically applies. Now, who it does apply to is the Court Admin Office downstairs because they're an office of the state. But it does not apply to the county. Matt Hilgard sent out some information to all the administrators and just simply said, remind, remind your board what, what the process really has been and what the requirements of them really are. And the requirements are not that you have to fly the state flag at all. So that's notwithstanding, if the board wishes to have us send a letter to the legislature or to our representatives or to the governor, as, you know, any of those options are still available, but there's not a compliance, there's not a compliance mandate with this. It was, it was passed through the legislature last year. It was passed, passed in one of the larger, I forget what the term is, but it was, it was a legislative item that was added to a larger package and it was approved as, as such. The commission was formed according to the way the legislature was approved and it doesn't apply to us.
So that being said, I, I am still, yeah, public comment is closed. That being said, I am still really struggling with the new flag. When I look at it, I don't see any history. Although I got an email today contrary to that from someone in support of the new flag. And it was, I, it was lumped in a large bill and a committee was chosen. I agree with that, but if, if you asked, it would be interesting if this went for a vote for everybody across the state of Minnesota, how people would vote. Therefore, I still am in support of sending a letter to Governor Walz and to each one of our representatives. Asking to have the, the current flag that we have stay in place.
Similar to that of Wabashia County's example?
Yep.
I also support this resolution that we got typed up here, two oh, two oh, two oh four. And that does address saying that we urge legislative delegation and governor to retain our existing state seal and flag.
The problem with the resolution, it goes into public cost and Jeff is telling us, so we would have to take that one out, whereas there's a substantial public cost associated. Because Jeff is just saying we don't have to make any of those changes.
Either, either the letter or the resolution both identify that and...
In a sense, though, if, if state buildings have to comply, then there is still some public cost.
There is. You're correct on that. And so the state patrols would have to change, I believe. Because I read an article where...
I would believe so. State offices.
Yeah, Head of, well, Head of County at that time believed they had to change because they said their sheriff's department would be over five hundred thousand. So AMC must have come up with their interpretation after that.
That's possible. I think I got an email from Matt at the front end of last week.
Okay.
I'd like to see this resolution right here.
Steve, do you have any comments?
I'm in favor of this resolution. I'm also in favor of sending a letter to the state, minus the language about the cost because it is not something that is required that we have. So that, that's my approach to it.
And I'm not, you know, I, when we talked about this briefly a couple, three weeks ago, as I pointed out, we had changed our, our county emblem, signage, however we wanna call it. So I'm not totally opposed to change, it's just, I'm not opposed to that flag. It's as simple as that. And, and it's not that I don't like the new flag, it's, it seems kind of plain to me. Three colors and some abstract art. I guess some people see the K as the state of Minnesota and, and the North Star and, and stuff like that, but I think with, with that flag, if you have it displayed and people can see it, they know that it's the state flag of Minnesota. If you fly, if you fly this other flag, is it for some local grocery store or something, or is it for, for the state of Minnesota? So I, I too am in support of sending a, a letter. And, and if we have to tweak the resolution, I'm in support of that.
Honestly, I don't believe you'd have to eliminate the piece about public expense because there's public expense related to the change, even if it doesn't hit Hubbard County. So I, honestly, I think, I think that it's really up to the board's wishes as to whether they wanna send a letter to their legislative representatives or if, and the governor, or if they wanna send the resolution. Essentially, if you read the two of them, they're the same language in different forms.
Yep. Does either one carry more weight?
The weight that's carried is the opinion of this board being forwarded to the people who have the opportunity to affect the legislative process this year, so, no.
I like the word resolved. That seems to carry more weight to it.
Okay.
So are you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, to approve this resolution zero two, zero six, two oh, two four, as it is written in the agenda.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
So Jeff, I have an item. I'm not sure if it should go under administrative or under committee reports. As Board Chair, I received information yesterday about the HRA board. Where do you want that put?
Madam Chair, wherever you want to. If you wanna lead that off before we go into committee reports or do it as a committee report, I would assume that's up to you.
Well, I think I'm gonna do it now because Ted's on the committee and I actually got the email, which I had Jeff forward to each of you. So we were let know. Let me pull this up. So Sarah Wilcox, who is the representative for the HRDC, and then Lori DeShane, who is representing DW Jones. I contacted both of them according to what's been addressed in the email. And so Sarah Wilcox confirmed that she will no longer work with the HRA board because the HRA board does not work well together. And she asked Naomi, who is the executive director of the HRDC, to find someone else to do that work. And then when I talked to Lori from DW Jones this morning, she indicated that they had a person that was, they would be willing to, that is willing to be hired for the maintenance management of the buildings here, but that person will not work with the HRA board currently as it's structured because they're feeling, because of the abusive nature of a board member at the apartment facilities. And so my concern is, more than anything, if DW Jones decides they're not, and they're questioning whether they wanna, according to the email, whether they wanted to continue management. And so my concern is we have to have management of these properties. And so what would, how would the board like to move forward?
I personally would like to, just if you have a problem member on that HRA board, I'd like to address that problem member and and have that due process and follow state statute of removing that person.
Okay. It is my understanding that that process goes, it, it, it would take a while. And so if we do that process, in the meantime, DW Jones might not hire someone and I don't know that. I'm just throwing that out there.
And our county attorney's not here to answer my thought on that, but I think that we could suspend that person during this process of review. That's my own thought on it.
Well, I would think it could either be suspension, resignation, or it would be dissolution of the HRA as it exists today.
I prefer just suspension of the individual.
If, if it's technically possible, I don't know the parameters of that. That would take legal opinion.
The statute requires that we prepare a case, that we provide notice, and we have a hearing. I do not believe there's a possibility of a suspension prior to that notice or prior to that date.
The only suspension that could happen would perhaps be a voluntary suspension or removal on a voluntary purpose from the HRA for a time period until that gets taken care of. I'm just looking for options, I guess. The HRA doesn't seem to be making any progress. Significant progress in, in steps forward, so I, I don't know what else to do. This has been a problem for quite a while now and nobody can really put their one finger on top of what's going on. But it would be nice to get it resolved so that the HRA or a different entity can move forward with everything that needs to get accomplished. I just think we're kicking the can down the road and we're not making, getting anywhere.
This could have been done seven, eight months ago. Skirted around it.
That's correct.
If it wasn't done seven, eight months ago, I don't know.
I wasn't part of that conversation, so I don't, I don't know.
Well, I, of course, would like to see the HRA board continue. I think we have good representation for the whole county. I don't think that this board could do what that board does. I think about, you know, which one of us would be doing the grant writing? You know, who would be, because DW Jones just handles the apartments. Who's gonna be handling the houses that we, we maintain? Who's gonna talk to the contractors because there's an awful lot of maintenance that wasn't done that needs to be done if we're gonna rent out some of these places? It's hard for me to ask a person that is so passionate about their role with the HRA to ask them to resign. But it's something that if it were to save the board, I would hope that it would save the board. And that's all I can say.
So what would you like? What solution have, are we coming up with here that we can say to DW Jones currently? The properties are not in good condition and that is because of lack of, they don't have somebody to, to do the maintenance on the property, even the basic cleaning? So what, what are we gonna decide to do today that is going to ensure to DW Jones that we want them to continue managing and to hire someone?
This is kind of something that, in a sense, we were given six months, the HRA board, and...
Ted, the only reason I brought this up was because I was made aware of this yesterday.
And like I said, you had contacted me late in the afternoon. I didn't receive Jeff's email till eight-thirty-ish last night or whatever. So I really haven't had time to process a lot of this, even though with the only hour or two hours of sleep that I got last night, I did do a lot of thinking laying in bed there. I don't know what to say.
Well, I think everybody on the HRA board needs to stay out of the day-to-day operations and the management of the facilities and, and let DW Jones and HRDC take care of it all. If there's continuing to be people, so to say, sticking their fingers into it, I don't see it being productive. I just, I just want everything to be able to move forward. I, I want HRA to stay a viable entity. I think they can serve a purpose in the county, but right now it just doesn't seem like we're getting anywhere with it.
So the statutory reference says that the commissioner may be removed by the governing body. They must be given a copy of the charges at least ten days prior to a hearing at which the commissioner has an opportunity to be heard by person or in council. When charges in writing have been preferred against the commissioner, pending final action thereon, the governing body may temporarily suspend the commissioner. So we cannot, we cannot now. We cannot until charges have been brought forward.
Well, then let's get the process going.
If it is found those charges have not been substantiated, the commissioner will be immediately reinstated. So that's the, that's the timeline. I, I don't know how long it would take for us to draft those, for research those, to bring those forward. We have to provide ten days' notice before they're brought forward to have the opportunity to appear. And it is still not, just having spoken with Jonathan this morning, still not his recommend, recommendation. His recommendation is the same as it was last year.
To dissolve the whole board?
That there's less risk to the county.
I think, as I've said before, I think there's risk to the county by not giving due process. If we were to abolish the board and then reestablish it shortly later, then due process has not been followed.
Okay, so I, I'm gonna set this decision over here just for the moment. My, my concern really isn't that decision right at the moment. My concern is DW Jones and their management. And so when I spoke to Lori this morning, they have a person ready to hire. The person will not work or the person will not accept the position with the current HRA board makeup. So when I listen to Jeff talk about the due process, that makes it maybe a month from now that this board could even take action. And so hypothetically, And so hypothetically, either D W Jones, in the meantime, doesn't have anybody to fill the role, and so the maintenance of the apartments will stand still. They may lose their, their candidate, I don't know. Those are all what-ifs. My concern is, you know, on the H R A Board, and I'm fine with having an H R A Board, my concern is, we have millions of dollars in property. We have tenants that are living there. Currently, the property is not even cleansed up to the standards that D W Jones has, because they don't have someone to do the work. And we're still kicking the can down the road.
Kick the can down the road eight months ago, it would be all done. Or at least, I wouldn't say we, that's what happened.
I don't, I don't know what action we can take today.
I'm not asking us to take action today, but I, I, we have to think about this. And either Jeff or I have to contact Lori and Sarah and say, we'll continue discussion next time when we have a full Board.
I think there's two actions that can be taken today. One, of course, is dissolve the Board, or the other is to get the process started for the suspension. Direct Jeff, Attorney, our Attorney, County Attorney, to get the process started.
When is the next H R A meeting? Is it Monday?
Monday.
And if that person were to resign in between, then that would just, make it a lot easier.
That's correct.
So, I'm hearing the Board, we'll, we'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting, unless you want to make a motion and see where it goes.
Well, I would make a motion to direct Jeff and our, and the County Attorney to begin the process of suspending that one member.
Removing.
Removing the, I mean, remove the one member.
It's part of the, it's part of the removal process.
Right, start the removal process.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and so Jeff, if that starts today, then do you start gathering materials today?
I would have a conversation with County Attorney today and determine a course of action, and then begin gathering materials. I would hope, I don't know if we can get this on the agenda in two weeks, given that we have to give ten days' notice. That would mean I'd have to, we'd have to have this together by Thursday or Friday this week, and I don't think that'll happen.
I don't think so, and I don't think that'll work. We have to abide by the timeline, no matter what, so.
I'm assuming it would come the first weekend. It's February now, so I think it'd be a month from now would be the earliest we could bring it.
We can always hold a special meeting.
You could hold a special meeting, yeah. If we have this done before the next meeting, and you direct us to, we can set a, set a date for a special meeting.
Is there any more discussion? Go ahead, Ted.
Could we recess for a few minutes?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Okay, so shall we take a five-minute break?
We're recessing with the motion and second on the table?
Can we do that?
It's fine.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Oh, wait, I, wait, are we, are we on? Are we done? Okay, go ahead, Ted.
Uh, thank you for that, that recess. I had a private conversation here. I believe the person that, so-called the issue, has informed me and has informed their Commissioner that they will resign at the next H R A Board meeting.
Which will be Monday?
Which will be Monday. And this is, I'm sorry, this is very hard for me.
Can I modify my, um, motion to where it waits until we get that resignation?
Or you could modify your motion to say that if the resignation is, you want to start the process unless resignation is submitted on Monday? Or you could hold off, do you see what I'm saying? If, if resignation isn't submitted Monday, then that would give Jeff the authority to start the process on Tuesday.
Yeah, that's, that's how I wanted to have it, yeah. So I'll, I'll modify my, my motion to delay until we know that we have that resignation on next Monday.
And if not, Jeff has to start?
If not, then he'd start immediately, yes.
Okay, and so is that, do you want to agree to the second?
I, I agree to, and I'll second that, correct.
Okay. All right, so you guys have the motion and the second down? Okay.
Yeah, it's in the recording, so.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Are you not voting?
I, I guess I'm gonna vote to, to oppose.
Okay.
It's, I, I feel strongly about the H R A Board. I know this member has a great passion for the job, but I know there is some, some issues, and it's just difficult.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I believe that, you know, the H R A Board has oversight of, of all the rental properties, so they need to know what's going on, but they just need to not do it like this person has done.
Like Steve had mentioned, you know, that we have people hired to do these things. And, and I think that, like I said, I think they have a strong passion and an advocate for the tenants. And I think for this person, the tenants are the number-one priority. And it's my understanding that we're losing some for several reasons. And, and I'd like that to stop too. But I, I appreciate the, the Board giving me time to have that conversation.
Becoming too involved isn't always a good thing either.
True.
Yeah, there's policies in place about Board, what the members are to do. And Ted, in response to, there's a number of issues and why client, tenants are leaving, leaving, et cetera. Hopefully, the H R A Board is working with D W Jones to move forward and get all this in place, so. Okay, so Jeff needs to leave, he needs to go to another meeting. You want to cover the work session, Jeff, before you go?
Yeah, as I mentioned previously, thank you, Madam Chair. Ellers will be here next week. They're gonna be talking about a path to a countywide E D A, and the forms, the formats, the process. I think Bruce Kimmel is gonna talk a bit about the process of moving forward with the Financial Management Plan, which will integrate our annual budgeting with our capital planning and our debt planning, and just be another tool in our belt that we can use. As I mentioned, if I ask him the question relative to the materials we saw from Bruce Schwartzman today, he can give us an idea on what, what a debt issuance like that would look like, and how that would fit into a near-term and a long-term financial plan. And then I would just hit the meetings to note. I believe everybody got an email from A M C relative to the Leadership Conference in March. If you are interested in registering, and I, I already have. It was a really good program last year from the Agenda. It looks like a really good program this year. There's the other additional dates. And then I will excuse myself to go join a conference with Ellers related to our investment reviews.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, moving on to committee reports. We'd like to start. Go ahead, Tom.
About a day before going on vacation, we did have the Kitsikami Regional Library Board meeting, so that's the only one I could possibly report on. Everybody voted for me to do, be the Chair again, so that means I got more, more additional meetings to do than the others have, because I'm on every one of their subcommittees. But one of the things that we approved was, I think it was thirty-six thousand dollars of additional grant to the local library for more work on their heating and cooling system. So, that makes use of their entire, they had originally eighty-six thousand that was allotted for them. So, they were getting use of all of that, and all that's coming from excess reserves. Every one of the nine libraries in the system has a certain amount allotted to them. So we're, we're spending that down. Then I think we're orders just a couple, hiring a, an H R person, because, you know, the library, it's nine libraries, there's a fair number of employees, and that was just a lot, that, that was why we went through several executive directors at a fairly quick pace recently, because of the load workload that's on that, that position, so.
And Tom, has the money been spent, down that excess money? How, how's that going?
Yes, we are getting it down. We want to have it at sixty-five percent of the annual budget, and right now, that is approximately sort of reserves of about two-point-two million. And we, we've, we've come up with a plan, you know, we, we've done buy downs. I've actually looked at budgets that we've got, and then we're reducing that gradually each year. So, by the year twenty-twenty-seven, we'll be the last of the buy downs, and that'll decrease in twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six, and twenty-twenty-seven be gone. And then that's where we'll have reserves of that sixty-five percent.
Go ahead.
Yep, which, I don't know how it got, well, I know, I know how it got up that high, but it shouldn't have. It's just that they had, went through a director who was kind of a miser with money, and. Anyway, that's all I got.
Well, that's not a bad thing.
Well, yeah, but this is, you know, even when some donated money to the library for a purpose, they didn't spend it on that purpose.
Yeah, seriously.
Steve?
The only one I was able to attend was Northwest Juvenile. I did it through Zoom, which didn't work out all that great for me. It's hard to hear, so I know Ted has, I know Ted has the paperwork, because I saw him there. So, but their numbers are up.
A little bit.
Yep, so that was, it's a disappointing amount, you know, news that their numbers are up, but. And their female numbers were up, if I remember right, significantly.
It's one of those things, it's, it's a, a mixed thing where, when the numbers are down, that's hopefully a good thing, because then kids are behaving out in, in the real world. But then the, the center has less income coming in. But we do, we do, we've got our member counties, but we also get from Hennepin County, well, from all over the state, but I think Hennepin County's been one that's added a lot. Some of these other, uh, Atasca Counties and stuff like that, the numbers are up from those people there. So they're helping pay the bills and everything, and we're not in any danger of, you know, I mean, we've got great reserves and everything like that. So, yeah, it's, I guess if you're done, I could just kind of.
Yeah, that's all, that's all I really had. I only attended Northwest Juvenile, so.
Okay. Let's see, I was once again elected to be the Treasurer of the Center Board. Let's see, we talked about client numbers. Good thing with Hubbard County, we don't have a lot of kids there. You know, I'm gonna see if I can find the numbers real quick. Here we go. Okay, so this is the Northwest Minnesota Juvenile Center Facility Admission Census Summary Report. Hubbard County had two discharges, and for this is, for basically- Hubbard County had two discharges, and for this is for basically the month of December. So we had no intakes, and we had two discharges, and we only had eighteen days of care. If you look at some of these others, two hundred and forty days, Bell Tremie County, two hundred and fifty-four days, Attasca County, two hundred and twenty days. And, and like I say, the member counties, the seven, eight counties that we have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven counties. Bell Tremie and Pennington are the high marks, and Hubbard County would be the low mark as far as number of days of service there for our clients. Let's see. I think we had gone through the state, of course, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. They don't allow strip searches or anything like that anymore. It's called, we've got a new policy, safety-based separation policy. Our summer school, our school's doing well. Let's see, and some of this is just, you know, beginning of the year stuff, mileage moving up and stuff like that. And there was an MCIT dividend of approximately eleven thousand dollars. So that was good. The Mississippi Headwaters Board, three years in a row now I've been voted in as chair.
Totally like campaigning you're doing.
I think it's with so many things, nobody wants to do the job. Let's see, we went through the January press release, which basically we talked about, the press release that we send out to different newspapers and stuff like that. I don't have it in front of me as to what that was. I believe it was, we talked about Minfish discussion with Gary Leaf. The press release kind of talked about that, talked about maintaining lake cleanliness and trying to engage younger generations in outdoor activities. We wrote a letter of support for the Minfish, supporting the Minfish's supports. So we were supporting Minfish's support for investing in the fish hatchery system and the public water access rehabilitations that the DNR is going to be processing. We went through the executive director's performance report and stuff like that. And there really wasn't much for legislative updates. We kind of went around a little bit, talked about what our individual counties are doing. And then there was a brief discussion about the Goodview Counties' challenge to clean up the Mississippi River and how a lot of us stated, it's at a time of the year when, of course, maybe not this year, where the, with the snowpack melting and stuff, normally the river is higher and the remote areas of, of the Mississippi, and especially like in our county, how do we access it to try to clean it up, if there's anything there to clean up? I thought about taking my kayak down the stretch there. Maybe starting off at the, well, I wouldn't start with the coffee pot, start maybe over, oh, I can't remember, Conroe Two, I believe it is, start there and maybe work my way downstream, because then I wouldn't be paddling against the current, and just see if there's what garbage I can find. Some of these, sometimes at the Mississippi, I've stopped at other locations along the way going down those Twin Cities, and you can visibly see tires and debris and other stuff. I just get tossed off the bridges and stuff. But when I'm here in Hubbard County and enjoying the view and everything, I don't see that kind of trash. I'm rather proud of how we keep our stuff, take care of our stuff up here. Let's see, North Country Community Health Board. I was voted in as chair.
I decided not to attend North Country Community Health, because it was, they don't need two commissioners there, so.
Yes, thank you. Uh, let's see. I was vice chair for the last three years, and they only allow you to be chair or vice chair for three years. So I know after three years I won't be chair anymore. I got this feeling, the next three years I'll be the chair. Uh, let's see, of course, we talked about the government, the federal program for Elder, Older, Older Americans Act. And we talked about where those dollars are going. We had a WIC update, the WIC caseload is up to over a hundred participants. The WIC coordinator is leaving, so we're getting, have to get a new coordinator there. The WIC clinics are busy with return to in-person scheduling. Hubbard County is picking up some of the appointments. Let's see, Hubbard County's numbers. Five hundred and sixty participants in Hubbard County, which is substantial. So there's definitely a need out there, and I'm glad that we're filling that need. And let's see, and I guess the only other thing was HRE board. We've been in discussion, we've got what they call the men's house. It's currently vacant. The last tenant moved out at the end of the year. It's really in bad shape. And then the furnace went out. So we had it winterized, because we don't want to be pouring money into a building that we're losing money on, even if there was tenants there. We're looking at if we're going to be able to sell that parcel or that property. It is, if we understand it correctly, it is in the HRA's name. I know that Kathy, I believe it was, was gonna have conversations with Brian Opus, because the men's house, of course, was for men that had some mental health issues. But if, and I don't think that they're going to continue with that, and if there is, we would need to have some kind of funding to rehab the house and make it so where we could have clients, you know, men with mental health issues in there. But like I say, right now it's vacant, all, there was only four men, I believe, to begin with, and one by one they all left. And then the last tenant left at the, at the end of the year. That's kind of a discussion we've had at the HRA. We have some properties that are just losing money. And what are we gonna do with them? We have, we are going to raise some rates, rent rates, especially for new tenants. It's kind of hard to impose much of an increase on those that are currently renting from us or leasing from us. And I guess we did talk a little bit about the issues that are currently at the HRA, but hopefully we'll be able to get through those now. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Ted.
In effective Monday, Steve will need to work on finding somebody.
Yes.
What I'll do is, the meeting's at six o'clock. What I'll probably do after the meeting, if, if we do indeed get that resignation, I'll notify Jeff, and then Jeff can send it out to whoever needs to have that information, which would probably be board chair.
My person that represents on the CUP BOA board has resigned. He agreed, he agreed to serve through the February meeting. And so if you look on the website, there is Jeff posted, anyone interested to submit a letter of interest. I have one person that I've been in discussion with, that is interested in going in the lot reviews and then attending the meeting. I don't know, I'll, I'll bring whoever. Hopefully, we have several people that we can choose from, we'll see.
And I hope to talk.
The Board of Adjustment?
Oh, yeah, so Mark's going on?
Yeah, he resigned.
I have a, tomorrow's gentleman I mentioned to you, he comes around the shop every other month. So tomorrow would be the day he was gonna be there.
That'd be great, so tell him to go on the website, on the Hubbard County website, and there's just, it's on the front page, right Denise? And then that'll link him to ESO, and they just submit a letter of interest along with their qualifications.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
This is a board that I think it's important for commissioners to be mindful of getting someone who aligns with your thoughts. So, yeah, it's definitely a commissioner decision there.
Yeah.
Your selection, and then the whole board's approval.
Prime West meeting we had, it was basically the presenting the budget for this next year. We ended the year twenty-twenty-three on the unofficial, un-audited net income of nineteen million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, which is highly unusual. Most of it is due to two factors. One is the enrollment is, is currently inflated, just because it's taking time to take off the people that no longer should be on there for insurance purposes. And secondly, medical services still are not up to average, where they have been in the past years, pre-COVID. So the current budget that's set for twenty-twenty-four, the net income is projected to be less than two million dollars. The nineteen million, a lot of that is, will be looked at again. This last year, we gave reinvestment grants, and I was gonna look up the total before the meeting, and I forgot. But it was many million, and we'll be looking again this next year for that. The other meeting I attended was the Mahabhi meeting on Friday. And Liz informed the board that there was a CUP hearing at Detroit Lakes at Becker County on the thirty-first, so I attended that. Prior to that, I had gotten permission from Liz and the landlord to go out and view the property. So I drove out there and then went to the CUP hearing, and the room was pretty full. I think two people vote, or spoke in support. And everyone else spoke in support of the project itself, but they were against the location. And so when I went, the location's beautiful, but it's a good ten to fifteen minutes off the highway. And then it's another probably fifteen, twenty minutes to get to DL. And so Wednesday, Liz had actually gotten a letter from MPCA that she hadn't been able to go through and see what the problem was with the property. So she asked to table, table indefinitely. At the end of that time, or right before she tabled, there was two correspondents that hadn't made it into the packet. And one of them was from the Sheriff's Department of Becker County, who gave their a hundred percent support of the project. And they were totally against the property that it was going to be put at, because there, for the last five years, due to a family member conflict, there has been forty-five sheriff calls to the property. So between the MPCA, which has to be dealt with, and Liz wasn't sure even what that involved at this point, and then this, she asked it to be tabled. I've since gotten correspondence, being a member of the, she spent to the whole board, and there's been movement in a direction, but I'm not at liberty to say that yet, because we haven't had a board meeting. So anyway, that's where that's at. And I think that's it. Managers meeting, there was, we just went around the room, had that discussion about the Sheriff's Department, you know, with the inmates, otherwise it was pretty, it was just a normal. So with that, is there anything else, or shall we adjourn?
I'll get meetings to note. I looked at the agenda for that leadership summit, so I'm interested in going. So could you register me for that? But I don't need the housing, though, I'll just commute from home. I'm not, I'm not too far away.
Yeah, I'm interested in going too, but I'll let you know for sure in the next day or so. Okay, thank you. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Yep, okay.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, aye. Motion carries. Thank you all.
Are we still online?
Yeah, Denise has to shut us off. It was nice when I've been contacted by people interested in the Board of Adjustment to say, there's a process, so submit your.